Oh, that's right. We're right here at WCRS this afternoon and we've got an exciting show for you this afternoon. I have two guys and myself sitting right here in the studio. We have, we have with us today County Manager Toby Chappell, fresh off a trip to Plano, Texas with his daughter and they had a great time down there playing a little soccer. And then we have Theo Lane here. He is the Chairman of our Greenwood County Council. I have to say, welcome everybody. How are you doing today?
Thank you, Ann. Pleasure to be here with you.
Absolutely. So Toby, I gotta ask you, how was this trip to Plano, Texas?
Great. It was great. It was a great opportunity. The, I don't know how many divisions there were, but I'd say it's probably maybe five age groups and you know, five for the boys and five for the girls. So you're probably talking about 10 slots, we'll call it.
Right.
And to think that Greenwood County had three, Greenwood, you know, Toros had three of the 10 slots for the state of South Carolina is pretty impressive.
It is impressive.
For a soccer club the size of the Toros. And so I think it was great. Daughter's team played three games. They, they lost two to one in all three games. So now obviously you don't want to lose any games, but to go and play at that level and to have a one, one goal deficit in all those games, I think speaks to the talent that we have in Greenwood and speaks to the quality of the club.
And they are state champions.
They are, in fact, state champions and...
You can't deny that. That's a good thing.
You know, so it was, it was a great opportunity. I think they're, they're gonna learn a lot. I would think next year they'll be a much stronger team for having this experience and played other girls, you know, at this high of a level. I think playing competition that's, that's strong is only gonna be beneficial in the future. So I think they've learned that the speed and the, and the strength of other girls across the country at that age, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to dig deep, but I think they can.
I heard it was very hot there. I heard that Greenwood didn't have anything on heat. That's the thing I heard from the girls.
Well, I don't know. I'll be honest with you. I didn't think it was nearly as bad as, you know, my wife, I think, had bought, you know, every fan imaginable off Amazon. You know, I said it was kinda, I don't know if you remember that, that movie, Caddyshack, not Caddyshack, Tin Cup.
Right.
Where the guy had the yips and he had all those different gadgets to try to, you know...
Stay cool.
Try to keep himself, you know, try to solve the yips. You know, that kinda was her with all the different cooling gadgets she had walking around. You know, so it wasn't hot. Of course it was hot. It's Texas in June. It's hot everywhere, you know, kinda, you know, at that, at that level of the country in June. But I didn't think it was oppressively hot, but it was warm.
And you all had a good time. You did a lot of other activities too, which was great.
Did a lot of other activities. You know, I'm a big history fan. So we went to, went and saw where the Gracie Knoll in Dealey Plaza was in Dallas, which was, you know, fascinating to see. Also went to the Stockyards in Fort Worth and saw that. So that was fascinating. You know, it was, it was good. It was a great time.
I'm glad.
Lot, lot of good food, too.
Lot of good food?
Lot of good food.
I mean, did they have good beef there?
It had great, great. Yeah. First place we got off, got off the airplane and probably didn't drive five miles. We, you know, asked someone where we rented the car and where's a good place to go get some Texas barbecue? And it said, go to this, this place, thing's called Hard Ate Barbecue or something like that.
Hard Ate Barbecue?
Hard Ate Barbecue. So we went there and had it. It was great. It was, it was phenomenal. I don't think it beats, you know, vinegar, vinegar based barbecue, but it was, it was strong.
It was good. It was good. It was good. Well, I'm glad you got to go. And Annabelle, she's got what, Chappy by her girls on the teeth?
She has a lot of aliases. I'm not really sure what that says about her. You know, Chappy, AC, The Beez, you know, she's got different, different aliases.
And she's the goalie, right? That's a tough job.
She has tough jobs. Tough job. She, and she kinda almost fell into it by accident. You know, she, and she's played since she was five years old. So I mean, she's eight, you know, eight now, eight years of playing now. But played defense for a few, first few years and then had, had a goalkeeper on the team that didn't come back and they had one that was kinda playing and then missed a few games for other reasons. So they needed someone to step in and she stepped in and kinda took to it like duck on water and she's found her home.
That's great. That's great. So that, that's good. Now, let's see, Theo, we don't want to leave you out. You been on any interesting trips?
You know, if I take a, if I take a long journey, Ann, it's probably to Malden or someplace.
Malden? Okay. Well, we'll skip talking about that with you. I know you really wanted to talk about this afternoon is some of the economic impact. And I also thought we should give a shout out to ES Foundry and what a good thing that has been. Would you like to fill us in a little bit on that?
I will. And Toby can, can pitch in with this. The award that, that ES Foundry just won, and I will say that the county and ES Foundry shared is the second time that Greenwood County has won that award. Toby, what's that in the last four years? We won that award also, National Award for EA Sweene when they came here. But yeah, that was, that was really, really nice and we really appreciated that and appreciated their, their leadership team coming to the county council meeting to talk about.
Not only that, they've moved from, they've already moved up to the 500 employees or close to 500 employees, isn't it Toby?
I think they're at three now and headed to five quickly.
Right. So because they had the opportunity because of Ascend leaving, right?
Well, to get people, yes. But Fuji leaving gave them the opportunity to acquire building space quickly. But Ascend leaving gave them the opportunity to acquire people quickly. So, you know, obviously you never want to see, you know, legacy economic development projects leave, you know, like a Fuji or an Ascend. But it's also exciting to see new technology and new, call them new age industries coming into the community. You know, I think that, I think we've talked about this before when I've been on the show. I think that's one of the key lessons that Greenwood has learned during the seventies and eighties when textiles were so prominent in this community that when the textiles turned, the whole economy turned. You know, and I think that's why it's critical for us to have these diversified economic development projects.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Ann. And I think the, I think the overall landscape of economic development in Greenwood County, sometimes it kinda slides by the public a little bit. You know, what I would like for the public to know and what I'm really proud of is that here in Greenwood County, over the last three years, we've brought in 1.1 billion dollars in new industry. And our net jobs, even with those losses that Toby just referenced, is we're 800 plus on net jobs in that same three-year period of time. And I think with the challenges that, that the nation has faced, I think Greenwood County's done really well.
Exactly. Yeah. I mean, I agree with that. And, and what do we, what is an unemployment rate here in Greenwood? Do you have any idea Toby?
I hadn't looked recently. Last time I saw it was tracking pretty much with the national average. I honestly hadn't looked recently, to be honest with you.
Okay. And, and I guess, I mean, I don't know this, but I guess that probably a lot of the jobs are jobs that we, our people can, can do that are in the, in the realm of jobs that are needed.
Yeah. And I think that's, obviously without divulging discussions that have happened at executive session, I think that's something that council is obviously cognizant of is that we get a diversified skillset of jobs. You know, everyone wants to chase high tech or, you know, corporate, you know, white collar, C-suite kinda jobs. And those are great, but we gotta be honest, a Fortune, you know, 10 companies not moving to Greenwood, they're not moving their world headquarters to Greenwood. That's just not, that's just not something we're, we're built for. You know, we're, but we, but there are things like ES Sweene or ES Foundry or some of these others that we are built for. You know, and I think, you know, I've got to give a lot of credit to James Bateman, to Abby, Abby Banks and Billy Ray Morgan. They've done a great job. You know, they're a small, a small shop compared to some of these other, you know, counties or other entities that pursue these. But, but we fight, we fight above our weight and it's because of those three, they've, they've done a phenomenal job.
Yeah. Toby, Toby really has expressed that very well because the county council in our, in our deliberations often say that, you know, we have to find jobs for every segment of our society and every skillset.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, so a, an expansion at, you know, at the, I'm trying to pick one Toby.
Yeah, the, you know, Carolina Pride.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to struggle and find Carolina Pride. When they had the opportunity to bring in some more jobs, council said, there are people who need those jobs. EA Sweene, I thought was a great example. You know, when I looked at what, what Tom and his team were willing to do in coming to Greenwood County, my first thought was because they are so labor intensive in the way they move product around in that building, my first thought was a kid can walk right out of West Shores High School and go to work there and have a good career if they so choose.
And particularly EA Sweene, a family, family company, you know, haven't, hadn't expanded outside of Minnesota. We were the first outside of Minnesota expansion. You know, they really brought a, not a corporate, but more, much more of it, it's almost cliche, family atmosphere. And I think we were a good fit for them. Again, probably not a good fit for, you know, white collar, C-suite, Fortune 10, you know, company, but a really good fit for an EA Sweene company. So, and again, that, to me, I can't say it enough, goes back to the work of James and Abby and Billy Ray. I think they do, they do an exceptional job.
And while we're on EA Sweene too, I will say, give them kudos. They've been a tremendous community partner as well. You know, when we need, when we need food for an event, you know, a charity event or something, they step right up. Darren Helene.
I'll say, I'll give you, I'll give you, not a, not a generic example. I'll give you this very specific example. Darren Helene, they produced a lot of food to feed the ESC, to feed Public Safety out in the field, to feed...
Did they have electricity?
I don't, honestly, I don't know how they did it.
Well, I mean, I'll just say...
I don't know if they gave them in Minnesota.
They did?
Yeah.
You got them power? Okay.
We made that a priority.
They are. But they fed, I mean, I don't mean like a couple hundred sandwiches. I mean like many thousands of sandwiches.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. And that took, look at what it took to be able to do what we went through with Helene.
Absolutely. So they were huge. They were a huge partner when, when all of us needed them.
So, so we've got good now. Theo, what about, I heard, I just heard that the economic impact of the, let's see, Greenwood County Recreation Area, AKA the Will Bank Center, AKA the old Civic Center site.
Don't let Robbie Templeton hear you say that.
Well, you know, when you talk to people, you almost have to say all those three because not everybody knows it. But you certainly have had a big impact there. You want to speak a little bit to that?
It's been tremendous. You know, the vision, Ann, you and I have talked about this before. We believe that, that Greenwood had, was a geographic, kinda represented geographic void. In that, people would tell us in the sports industry, when you're trying to promote and bring in tournaments, because that's a big part of your revenue stream, they would say Greenwood has wonderful playing surfaces, but terrible amenities. So the desire of the county council, going back to the 2016 Capital Project Sales Tax Initiative, was to bring our, bring our bills and our amenities up to, up to standard. And, and we believed that by doing that, that we could, if nothing else, get the spillover that's coming out of Lexington, Aiken, Duncan, Greenville. And I think we've been remarkable, remarkably successful. You and I joked earlier about how we, we've kept our registration fees, you know, very reasonable, trying to attract people to let them see Greenwood. And the feedback, I think Toby would agree with me, the feedback that we've gotten has been tremendous. And to, as far as the economic development impact, just yesterday, I was in the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting and I took the opportunity, because those are community leaders who I want to know the successes that the county's seeing. And I made the statement to them and Kelly McWhorter was sitting right there at the table with me and backed me up. So I didn't want my numbers to be wrong. But Toby, I think, told you earlier that in the past four months alone, the economic development impact of that facility has been 1.7, 1.7 million dollars in just four months. And, and so when you, when you graduate that out, you know, we spent about 8.5 million, I think it was roughly.
Little more, little more.
Okay. But...
Who's counting dollars?
Yeah. But the point, the point is still the point. Yeah.
Well, my point is, you know, we're just, we're just getting started. And I think that what we're gonna see is, is a payback on that facility in a very relatively, I haven't done the math, but in a relatively short period of time.
But that's economic impact, not dollars, not dollars into the community. I mean, not dollars into county councils first. Yes.
And, but dollars into the county budget wasn't really the point.
Right.
The point was to get the dollars into the greater Greenwood community, to have people coming from outside in, you know, buying lunch, staying in hotels, buying gas, you know, doing, doing the things that you do when you travel. Like we talked about earlier, being a parent of a travel sports child at this point, I can tell you, you spend a lot of money when you travel for competitive sports. You know, and it's not always things that you think of. You know, kid forgets baseball glove. They get to run to the store and buy one. Or shin, shin guards for soccer players, you have to go get them. There's a lot of economic impact that's tied to sports tourism. And I think we missed the boat for a long time. And I think we're not missing it now.
We're not. And, and another benefit of it too, it's not just, you know, for bringing people to our community. Certainly we want to expose our wonderful community, but for our own kids, you know.
How are you doing on staffing that, just out of curiosity? Because I knew you're having camps and all this kinda stuff.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's a struggle, but we're using manpower right now to, to fill in some of the gaps. You know, I've worked with my HR staff and, and told them to try to prioritize that department right now to, to fill the vacancies that we need filled. So we're making it, but it's, it's just a struggle. I mean, just to be honest with you. And these aren't particularly high paying jobs. You know, this is, you know, the maintenance of fields is important, but it's, it's just not a high paying job. So...
Well, you've got the maintenance and then what about doing the camps, the actual instructors and everything too, right?
You have, you have to have those too. So you have to have...
Facilitating these tournaments, staffing for those.
You have to have staffing for the tournaments. You have to have people, you know, changing, you know, simple things like dumping the trash cans and cleaning the bathrooms, you know, so there's...
Oh, that cleaning the bathrooms thing. Yeah.
That goes, I mean, that goes with it. I mean, you know, you start putting, those are, those are the small things that ruin very, you know, great complexes.
Exactly. Yes.
So, you know, Brad, you gotta give credit to Brad Cuddell and his staff. You know, they...
They're implacable.
They've dug, they've dug deep. You know, and it's, like I said, it's not always been being seamless, but it's always gotten accomplished.
Right.
You know, and I think that's, that to me is the mark. You know, and, and kinda parlaying off of that discussion, you know, these same people spent, I think it was two weeks ago, giving away about 1,500 food vouchers to, to the four senior citizens.
Seniors. Right.
You know, so they've got too much work to do already, but they still were able to organize and grab some other county staff to give away food vouchers out at, out at the complex recently. So they're, they're doing great work. And Brad and, and Luke and a lot of those guys out there, they're, they're doing, they're doing great work.
I think the American Legion baseball field is doing really well right now. Yes, that's been doing very well too. So no, I think it's great. And every time you drive out there, I, I understand sometimes it's hard to find parking.
Yeah. Hey, you gotta have problems. Let's have that problem.
Exactly. So those are some of the really great things that are happening. And I, I just think that, of course, you just finished the budget. And one of the things about the, the budget this year, I think, I think Theo made a very interesting comment about the budget in the meeting the other night. And I, I wanted to play that for you here as we get started. Cause I think it just kinda sets up what, what maybe has come across on, on this. Let's see, where to go, where to go? Okay. I wanted to set it up so you could just address it. Because this has been one of these things that has made a big difference.
I'm just happy that somebody thought something I said was interesting.
Oh, I've played lots of the stuff off county council, guys. But anyways, this is, this is most interesting. Let's go ahead and hear this. It's not very long. Let me turn it up so y'all can hear it, hear we go.
Counsel, we talked about it, thank you Stephanie, we talked about it in second reading, that there was, there's been a lot, a lot of thoughtful deliberation in regard to this budget. Probably more, more conversation than we have had in my nine years of service. And I think that's been extremely valuable. We made some changes that we, that we approved, pushed forward the last time. I would like to entertain a motion that we, that we voted on this budget as, as provided that these changes have been put before us.
No point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I will make a comment too, that I think sometimes it may be lost on the public, that our fire fee funds our fire service, primarily funds our fire service, correct Chief? Our fire fee. And I, as one taxpayer, not speaking now as the county council chairman, but as one taxpayer, believe that that fire fee is probably low. The cost of running the county fire service is, is high. It's growing with every year. For any that don't know, one fire truck costs us about a million dollars. And I think as one member of council and a taxpayer, that we probably need to look at increasing that fire fee. But we've had great conversation about it and we appreciate that. Counsel, any other comments or questions?
So, so my point, my thing is that this year's budget, I, I know that it's usually something that usually Stephanie and Toby, you usually get the request. Whereas this year, there seems to have been a lot more conversation about what the different aspects of the budget. Would you say that's true?
I'm not...
Go ahead.
Yeah.
My, I don't know that I really understand what you're asking. Was there more conversation about it?
Well, I mean, as Theo said, it had been a lot more, a lot more enlightening, a lot more different aspects to it. A lot more questions had been raised about certain aspects of the budget.
Right. Let me be clear. In the nine years that I've been on council, I was simply saying that I thought that, because we held a public meeting, as you know, to, to talk about really anything that any council members chose to, to have to talk about in regard to the budget. If there were any things that they either didn't understand or just wanted more clarity on. And I think that was good. But I did believe that we talked more about the details of the budget this year than I ever remember us doing personally.
That's what, that's what I meant. Yes.
And I think, and I don't think that's a bad thing.
Well, I just, one of my questions was, I wondered if next year, would you make some changes to what you're do, to the way it's been done in the past? That's what I'm saying. You know, city council does theirs, their department heads play, give their budget to a retreat meeting where council members are and then Julie and all the other members. But each, each department head gives their budget request and they usually do it in a retreat, maybe just up the road, not very far, or you know, but, but that's what they do. And I, I think that way people get to hear exactly what is in the budget.
Ann, let me ask you a question on that. I'm assuming those are public meetings that you're talking about. How many of those have you been to?
I've been to, I watched a lot of them. I mean, I don't actually physically go and sit there. But I, I just think when, what we saw on the council meetings is there were, there were some questions. And I think some of those questions were addressed that hadn't been addressed. For example, for example, there was an issue on the equity being done the first of January and it was changed to July. I think that was, that was an important one.
It was. Sure.
And other things that were important is there was a discussion about a assistant county manager. And to the tune of, what was it? $167,000 for an assistant, assistant county manager. Or it could have been the 164. It was $3,000 difference between the equity piece and that. And originally, I believe in the budget, you had wanted to put the equity piece to January, but go ahead and start looking for an assistant manager. And that through discussion changed.
Sure. And that was a discussion that happened without having the meeting that you're talking about. So I still...
But, but if you had this meeting, would other things, you know, for example, for example, I know the fire, the fire, the fire station, the fire one, they have, they had requested six extra people. Is that right? Six, I think it was. And in the end, you went ahead and left that in there. But what about some of the other departments that asked for help? For example, the sheriff's department.
Okay. If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Let me take that one.
Okay, I'll let you take that one.
If you would, because, because I, I don't listen to your show, but I understand that...
Wait a minute. You don't listen to, wait a minute. That this, this is going to be played everywhere. The county manager does not listen to my show. Go ahead now.
He's usually at soccer practice, but go ahead.
You can always go back and listen to it afterwards.
Yeah. But I understand you've, you've gotten, gotten stumbled on this before. So...
I've gotten stumbled?
On this issue before.
Stumbled?
Whatever word you want to use. Confused.
I'm confused?
Whatever word you want to use.
Okay, go ahead. I'll let you talk for a minute.
All right.
I control your microphone. Just remember that. Okay, go ahead.
But I control my car. So that's the way that goes. So my point, the point is, I think someone, and I don't know who, but I hope to clear this up, has set up this false narrative of either there was gonna be six firefighters or there were gonna be deputies. And you were only gonna get one of those two things.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I know they got turned down, right?
No, I'm explaining it to you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Those two, they were not one or the other.
Okay.
They were completely funded by two different streams of money. So the fire fee pays for the six firefighters. The general fund paid for the deputies. So...
Are we talking about the equity piece or actually hiring, okay, new deputies. Okay.
The new six firefighters.
I just want to make sure. Okay.
The new deputies came out of two totally unrelated pots of money. So they never competed for, against each other for whether one would happen or not.
Well, I don't think that it was a competition.
No, but I think the way, the way this keeps getting said is, is the fire got theirs, but the sheriff didn't get his. As in, one got funded at the expense of the other. And that's not true. That's nowhere related, nowhere remotely true.
Okay. So explain to me why there was nothing for the sheriff's department.
Well, I'll tell you why I didn't recommend it. I think the chairman can speak to why he or council didn't put it into the final budget. We got the request from the fire department and they were very clear on why they felt like it would be beneficial. Three of the bigger points was it would help us meet NFPA standard that we probably could do better on.
What does that mean?
NFPA is National Fire Protection Administration or agencies. It's a standard. It's a national standard.
Okay.
And, and some of those standards are things like how many firefighters have to be on the scene in a certain time, or how many ride on a truck, or how many go in the fire versus how many stay out of the fire. So there's all kinds of standards that they, that they have. And they're considered the standard, you know, no pun intended. So they're having these new firefighters helped us reach that standard better. And that was...
But you don't have the new six firefighters yet.
They will help us reach that standard better.
Okay. All right. Okay.
And that was part of Chief Holmes' argument was, I can do better at reaching this standard if I have these people.
Don't we already have a good standard here in Greenwood County?
Good standard as in what?
What, for insurance and everything with the number of, of fire stations and everything that we have?
Yeah, but I'm not talking about insurance standards. I'm talking about NFPA standards, not insurance. So that was one of his, one of his articulated issues. Cause I can do better on this NFPA standard if I have these people. Another one is that the North Greenwood Industrial Park has one new building. We're about to put another new building in it. And it build out, this is gonna have somewhere, depending on how big they are, eight or, eight or so large industrial buildings. So having firefighters closer to that from the Hodges Station is beneficial to everyone.
Let, let me interrupt you for saying that point. And I think it's important too to mention, the six firefighters that were hired several years ago, a big point of their hiring was also the exact same circumstance in the industrial corridor on 246.
Mm-hmm. Yes, absolutely.
Because we felt like those buildings, there was too much risk associated with those buildings.
Right. And, and the third point was the response time to West Shores would be much better because the way it's currently situated is Cornecha in the evenings, they'll be coming from Cornecha. And I think the other station may be on 25 South. It's a long distance. And he articulated the minutes in the application, which I...
Okay. Well, that's fine.
So my point is, so you have that.
We got a lot to cover. So move along here now Toby.
We can't, you can't ask these loaded questions and they're like, give me a 30-second answer to my loaded question. So my point is, he made a very strong articulate case of why he should have people.
So...
Then the other application, which again, is a public document, you know, so I'm not, not disparaging anybody. I'm just, I'll give it to you. The other argument was, we should hire new deputies because there are new houses. And essentially, it was a one paragraph justification. So to me, I felt like there, that the second one should look a lot more like the first one. And I think if it had, in my, at my level, and I'm not speaking for council, at my level, I think it would have been viewed a lot more favorably.
Well, I think when they asked for six, they asked for four, four road deputies, didn't they? And...
There was five road deputies.
Well, wait, one, and one was a process server and one was a school resource. Because we have no extra resource officers. They only have exactly what they need. So if somebody's out, then... They only have exactly what they need. So, if somebody's out, then somebody has to try to cover it, and that's a problem. And they needed a, what they said, a process server is what I was told. So, that's how they got to the six. But now, back to the fi, now, let's just go back to the fire department for a second. So, that's going to cost four to five hundred thousand dollars for these new six. Is that correct? Firefighters with their benefits and everything? I think it was four to five.
That sounds about right.
Right.
Without having an attorney, it sounds about right.
So, my, my question is, is this, and I understand it's coming out of the fire fund, is this sustainable? Is this sustainable? Will you can pay it? I understand you have the money in the fund for this year. Will you have the money in the fund next year and the year after? Or are we going to be looking at fire fee raising of, of costs? Of, of pa, of payment?
Professional firefighters in the service, is that, if you, if you escalate that number, are tremendously expensive.
I don't have a problem with the number. It's just, is it sustainable and how will you sustain it is the question?
Well, my hope is that with the growth and development we were seeing in the county and the increased tax revenues will help us to sustain it. We obviously wouldn't hire them if we didn't think we could afford them, because we understand that every year, like everything else.
You said that the fire fee was low. I think you said the fire was low.
I think it is low, and that, you know, people might want to throw rocks at me, but I'd like to see us elevate the fire fee. But, um, but.
I know Ms. Miller said that a dollar twenty-three or something a month, twelve dollars, thirteen dollars was not that much. But is it sustainable? And should there be, and is, do, do businesses pay more? When you're talking about the county and, and the areas that you're looking at putting fire trucks and whatnot?
Sure. You, you can go on the county's website and see the fee schedule, and it clearly outlines, there's a different fee for residential. There's a different fee for all other. There's a different fee for industrial. And industrial, I would tell you, by a wide magnitude, pays significantly more than residential. When, when we put the fire fee in place, time getting away from me now, eight, nine, ten years ago when we first did it, council was very intentional to say, we want to minimize the impact on residents, and we're willing to, to have others pay more.
When you, when you talk about sustainability, Anne, I, I need to mention the volunteer services, because we are ble, we are very fortunate, very blessed. Two years ago, you've, you've probably heard me say, other people have, that our fire plan needs to be a living, breathing document. And it, because circumstances and conditions will change. We saw that after putting the first five-year plan into effect when maybe three years ago, two years in, a lot had changed. Two years ago, we thought we were in an absolute crisis with volunteerism. Numbers were dropping. County council made the decision to help pay for some training. I, as one member, thought, it's not fair to ask people to be volunteers for something so significantly important, but oh, by the way, go pay for your training.
Well, and not have to go out of town. Now, don't they do a lot of it local now too?
We do it locally. We do it in Abbeyville County and Greenwood County.
Right.
But my point was that our volunteer fire chiefs really deserve kudos, because they have, with the training and, and just the pride that takes place with volunteer services and manning those stations and being responsible for them, we've now got about two hundred volunteers. But the, the additional full-time firefighters from our conversation with Chief Holmes are really to strategically place them not, not, not as backups, but as, let me give you an example. If we respond to a structured fire now as a county fire service, we'll have more than enough people to put this building out if it catches fire. But if this house, if this building catches fire, and one catches fire in wear shells, that's a problem.
Right.
And that's why Chief Holmes wants to strategically place these professional firefighters so that we can address that.
And you brought the word sustainability. I'll tell you what's not sustainable, is for the volunteers to leave the fire service, and we have to put professional firefighters in all their places.
Right.
That is one hundred percent not sustainable.
But is it, you know, I think one of the questions that Mark Allison brought, brought up was the fact.
What she wants to say is, we're never, ever going to raise the fire fee ever.
No, I'm not looking for you to say never, ever. I'm saying it'd be reality for the folks out there. That's what I'm saying.
I think the reality is the fire fee is going to go up. And will it go up next year, or the year after that, or the year after that? I don't know. We'll have to get into the budgets and find out. But is it going to go up? Yeah, it's going to go up. It is. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's shocking news. I don't think anybody should look at it and go clutch the pearls. I can't believe the fire fee is going up. Yeah, it's going to go up.
Okay, well, I mean, that is.
If you look at the city's budget, and they do theirs not through a fire fee, if they do it through their millage, their millage has gone up to cover for their fire fee, I mean, for their fire department. I think if you looked at any fire service around here, either their millage, if they use a millage or, or the fees have gone up.
The point is, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to go up. And that's all I was asking, Anne. And my other question, my other thing was, I, I understand the difference between one comes out of the fire fee and one comes out of the general, general budget. But do you not think that we are cutting ourselves short with our sheriff's department regardless, regardless of the presentation, which always seems to come back to where you are, Toby, on the presentation? When we were talking about the jail, you didn't like their presentation. When you talk about this, you don't like their presentation?
I didn't like, I, no, if you want to talk about the twenty, I know that's a sore subject for you, the twenty twenty-four capital project sales tax.
It's not a sore subject, it was a discussion.
That wasn't my opinion. That was the opinion of the Public Safety Committee and the CPST Committee. I didn't, I didn't vote on any of those things.
I, you know, you didn't vote on them, but, but, but you did, but you, you have, you are not pleased with the type of presentation that you get from the, from the sheriff's department. Maybe y'all should, maybe y'all should help the sheriff's department. But no, my bottom line is, regardless of that, let's not even go there with that.
No, 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 you can't, you can't do that.
No, because the most important thing is that we cover, that we cover what is necessary for the sheriff's department. Is this, because we're talking about emergency services.
Of course we are. But again.
Of course we are?
Of course we are. Of course we have to cover what's important for the sheriff. I was in a meeting this morning with the sheriff trying to figure out how to solve a problem with him. The sheriff, the sheriff gets what the sheriff needs, but the sheriff has to compete with everyone else in the general fund. That's the way that works. He doesn't get a special carve out of, okay, okay sheriff, here's seven or eight million dollars, Godspeed, and hope you do well. He has to compete with everyone else. And if you have to compete with everyone else, he, just like the engineering department and the HR department and.
But don't you rank things by importance of what is needed, just like we have the fire department is needed?
Forty-eight percent of the general fund goes to public safety.
Yes.
Forty-eight percent.
Goes to the sheriff's department, detention center, and nine-one-one. Forty-eight percent.
Forty-eight percent of the general fund.
So, how much, Anne, budget writer, Anne?
I'm not a budget writer. I, I have, I only know what the public is asking me, and that's why we're sitting here having this discussion today. We're talking about some of the issues, and do people feel good about it? Good, good about it? That's the question.
Let, let me say this to make them feel better about it.
Okay, make us feel better, Theo.
I've been on county council for nine years, and I think I have a great relationship with Dennis Kelly. We talk routinely as Toby and the sheriff. Not one time in the nine years that I've been on council has a sheriff ever come to us with a need, and I'm not talking about the budget, I'm talking about a need that arises on the fly, and the county council has ever said no. Not one single time. Am I correct on that, Manager?
I, I can't think of a time.
Okay.
And, and if, if you know of a time, Anne, please, please tell us what that time is.
No, I mean, I, I, I'm just, I am just the voice of Greenwood here, Toby.
I'll tell you a recent, I'll tell you, I'll tell, well, we'd like to think we might be some of the voices of Greenwood, but, but, um, but I, a, a recent time that comes to my mind, which was last year, when we realized that there was a deficit, and I thought this was an officer safety issue, when they needed more long guns in patrol cars. You recall that? And I, I think my recollection is it was going to be to the tune of about eighty-seven thousand dollars, if my memory is correct. And that wasn't a budgeted expenditure, but we went and found the money and said, we agree, you need to do that. So, that would be one example.
Well, that would be one. I, I just, I do, I do, I am concerned about, do we, as we look at putting more people, more businesses, one of my questions, you know, do you have any idea? And I, I, this is just right off the top of my head. As old eight, former Stony Point expands in everything, are they going to require the sheriff's department? Are they going to have their own security? Maybe, Theo, do you have any idea what they're planning on doing out there?
I've not heard any plans from any of the old, or the Oakley team that I engage with about their own plans for security. I do recall that in, and Manager, tell me if I'm incorrect about this, but I do recall that there was discussion during the planning and zoning portion of approval for that project, that they were wanting to allocate land in that project for both a sheriff's department substation and a fire station.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I mean, because I think that is an issue. That's going, and those are going to be big, expensive, big, expensive homes and whatnot, yeah.
Yes. I think we all agree that as Greenwood grows, the sheriff's department, like all other departments, is going to have to grow to some degree. I, I think that's a hundred percent true. I think we need to obviously be very cognizant of how all these departments grow. And I think that's an important concept that the staff, sheriff, council, all are going to have to come to the table and, and figure out how we do. But, but, again, the sheriff being one of the many cogs in the wheels of the county.
Well, he's kind of a big one, isn't he?
He is a big one.
He's a big one, yeah.
He's a big one.
But, yeah, but I, I would tell you, if the assessor doesn't do her job and we don't bring in taxes, she's going to become a big one. You know, the auditor doesn't do her job and the tax bills don't go out in October and the county doesn't have any money, she's going to become a lot more important.
Well, they're all important.
That's, and that's my point. They're, they're all important, and they all have different roles, you know? Some are public safety, which God bless them, you know, obviously we need them. Some of them are, you know, collecting taxes, and some of them are assessing to collect taxes, and some of them are managing our lake, and some of them are ambling the pier, picking up litter to beautify. They all have important roles. They all have very important roles.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, it takes a, it takes a village to do all this, absolutely. So, but that was just, that has been a question. When you look at the fire department getting six, and the sheriff's department not being able to get any in this budget, that is a question that a lot of people have had. So, that's why I wanted to bring it to the fore. Now, I know that you are going ahead and paying the equity port in, in July, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I might ask you, I might, I might point to exhibit A, which is on my computer. You just released the budget and put it on Facebook.
Sure.
Okay. It does say compensations. Second half of internal equity applicable, applicable in January. That is, that is what it says. And, I mean, it's right here. I mean, if you want to walk around, I can't turn the screen. If I do, we'll lose it, but.
I can tell you that's the type of, I trust you reading it correctly. I'm just telling you it's wrong.
So far, I'm able to read. Yes, Toby, I'm still able to read.
I don't know. I can't verify. I'm just trusting.
And then it also says, I wanted to get into this one just a little bit, because this was a question a lot of people had, and I know you had a lot of discussion about it in, on the budget, the addition of a deputy county manager. That was listed as a general fund highlight.
Sure.
Let, let me speak to that. To, because I have spoken on this issue from my seat in the public meetings.
Yes.
I went, I, Theo, went to the county manager over two years ago and told him that I believed with the growth and development of this county, that the time had come that he needed some relief. Toby has seventeen direct reports. Kathy Miller and I have talked about this, and we agree that that is far too many.
I think he also agreed that it could be re, reorganized.
Right. And so, but my point is, two years ago, I went to the manager and said that I personally think, and I'll be willing to advocate for this if you, if this is something you feel that we need. To his credit at that time, the county manager said to me, I think we have other needs where we can better place that money. And so, he kind of took, kept that on his shoulders, which I respect. Then recently, probably after Thanksgiving, we talked about the fact again, I think he brought the issue to me at that time, that he thought now the time has come that we need to look at that. I want it, but I acquiesced to some of the concerns by some of the council members. I don't make any decisions. I'm one member like anybody else is. But, um, but then again, when we, out of concerns that council had, I think across the board, with the internal equity piece, and not, not ever wanting, wanting to give an impression that we were stepping away from anything, because there wasn't really a specific time commitment on the payment of internal equity. We knew what our intentions were when we originally approved that. But we just thought, I think council across the board thought, let's challenge the staff, primarily Toby and Stephanie, to see if there's a way we can do this and push this forward.
Push what forward? Push what forward?
Internal equity. So, and the way we did was, we basically scrapped the assistant county administrator plan.
Now, did you leave money in the budget for that?
For now. We left the mu, we left the money in the budget for that.
No, 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 no.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, and, and, and I saw, and I saw, let, let me just say one word, then I'll let you go. That April first is when a assist, or deputy, I guess you're calling it a deputy county manager, which is an assistant, would be potential for that to come on board. April first is what the slide said that Stephanie had up on the board the other night.
Yes. So, to, to make a very complicated thing simple, I'm, I'm, I'll just say.
I'm so glad you're doing this for me.
I don't know. I just say it was for you. I feel like it's for you, and that's.
It might be for me.
It may, maybe for me. The point is, essentially, we flipped the two. So, the, the deputy, instead of coming in July and then equity in January, they flipped. Okay, so.
Right, so we're putting the equity in, in July.
Okay. And then, when council said, okay, we won't, it's not just the general fund. There are other funds that have employees. So, we needed to go find more money to get everyone internal equity in July.
Absolutely.
So, that costs more money. So, so the first move, we lost about half of the one sixty. In one sixty-four, let's be clear, that's salary and benefits. That's the total number.
Right.
Only we're thinking that the number two will be making a hundred and sixty-four thousand in salary. They won't.
It's a hundred and sixty-four, a hundred and sixty-seven total?
Whatever the number is.
Total, with benefits, exactly.
So, you lost half of that in move, in flipping the two. So, now it's, there's eighty in the budget, okay, at that point. And then we need to go find more money to ensure the other funds have the ability to get their internal equity in July. So, you lost another forty-ish. So, the budget that was approved has about forty to forty-five thousand for the number two.
I think it's forty-five thousand.
Yeah, so that's why it says the person can't be hired until April first. Okay?
So, you're still going ahead with hiring a deputy?
I think potentially, I, I would, I would say potentially. I think the money, the point, I think council, from what I heard of the deliberations was, we'll leave the money there, and then we'll take the next nine months and figure out, what does that look like? Does it look like a new person? Does it look like reorganizing the current staff in a way that we can achieve the same goals? Is there some third option that we haven't figured out yet? So, I think all of that's going to be on the discussion, again, from what I've heard, that's going to be a discussion that's going to happen over the next nine months.
Do you think you need a, a deputy assistant manager or whatever?
I think there needs to be some reorganization, yes.
Some reorganization? That's a different.
No, maybe. Again, I'm not, I, I've said from the beginning, I'm not committing that it has to be a new body. Maybe there needs to be reorganization of the current bodies. I think that's all part of the discussion that's going to need to happen over the next nine months. And I think the way we structure this, it gives everyone the ability to do that.
So, there's roughly forty-five thousand sitting there towards the price of a, either a reorg and paying people, because I remember hearing some discussion about that, or going towards a deputy assistant manager?
Or some third option that we haven't figured out yet. But I, I think the point is to put in some succession planning, having some.
Are you going somewhere? I just need to know. I mean, you know.
I don't know. I mean, at some point.
I mean, last year, you, you thought about it.
You know, I may get hit by a bus. I may not go anywhere, may go to heaven.
Well, you know, you could also hire somebody. You've seen what happened over there at the city. They had two, and the, both of those left. So, you know, I think you're better off having maybe more people involved. But anyways, that's a, that's a question.
I think, I think a point though, and I've, I've got, I've got to defend my county manager here. I think a point that needs to be understood. Toby, Toby has many times, in my view, he has many times shown his commitment to the county first. Not to himself, but to the county first. My contention is, he did it when he didn't go to Beaufort. That was the first thing. My contention is that when, when our conversations.
There's no place like Greenwood. There's no place like Greenwood.
I kind of think that's true.
Those ruby slippers, those ruby slippers from the Wizard of Oz.
But, but, so then, as I mentioned earlier, when, when we had conversations, it kind of challenged he and the treasurer to find a way to do what we thought was just the right thing to do with internal equity. Once again, a part of that was setting aside, or at least pushing back, the consideration on that position. I want that position. I'll tell you, I've said that publicly.
You know, but I think your council, I mean, if you look at the members of council, they wanted that equity paid. I can remember Dane making a statement that he didn't realize they might be put out for eighteen months on the equity. I can remember Dane making a statement that he didn't realize they might be put out for eighteen months on the equity.
That's right.
And that, so I think there is a point to that.
Yeah, but that's, that again gets back to the original point of that's how council works. We, we provide a, a budget, council decides, hey, we want to change these pieces, we want to do this, do that. And then it gets adopted. That's, that's the whole point of why you have seven members and not one. They get, they get.
It's kind of scary if we had just one.
Well, I can go back to the boss hog days and then.
Why is that how you see?
That's the way a lot of counties got ran in, you know, pre-home rule, you know, having one person making those decisions. But that's, that's the beauty of having a council is they get presented with a document and they get to make changes however they deem and, and we as staff, you know, try to keep up. You know, when they say we want, we want you to make it do this, we do our best to try to make it do that.
Right.
And I think this is a classic example.
And, and, and to point, and to also make the point that now for over twelve years, every time the council has said, do that, they've found a way to do it without millage increases, which I think is remarkable.
But is a millage increase coming?
Uh, yes.
One day.
Yeah.
One day.
Next year?
Like the fire fee. Yes, yes.
But I promise you, it won't come until we have no other choice. I mean, you know, I'm like Mark Allison. I'm a taxpayer too.
Right.
And I pay plenty. So one day, certainly.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's reality.
Yeah.
Right.
There's going to be a tax increase at some point, yes. Is it next year? I don't know. Is it the year after? Don't know.
Well, I mean, I think the question is, and, and do, do you think, what do you think? Okay, now you can say, well, Greenwood, this, that and the other. The economy here is, um, i- i- is, is good relatively speaking. Uh, but do we know what the future holds with the na, on the national and on the, with the wars that are going on, the tariffs that are happening? Do you know, I read an article, I read an article, you know, you, we all tout the capital project sales taxes being great for funding and you can anticipate the funding and it has, it has provided good funding in the past. But they're talking about the fact that a lot of Canadians are not coming to Myrtle Beach or to South Carolina, uh, because of the tariffs. So do you think any of those things could affect what your budgeting is, Toby?
Well.
Or have you taken that into consideration?
I don't know how many Canadians come to Greenwood, so I'm not worried about the Canadians not coming. But, yeah, I mean, that's obviously something that we look at every year is, you know, what, what has happened over the last three to five years, particularly the last three years, you know? And if you look at our revenue, it's, it's pretty, pretty solid.
Right. But have you noticed any changes so far or not?
No, not that, not that I've seen. In the last capital project sales tax report we got from Stephanie was, it was the highest it's ever been. Three point five, three million, I think, for the quarter. So.
And that would have been for January, February, March? Yes, yeah, March, yeah.
That would, that should have been right.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know. I, you know, obviously I can't predict the future. None of us knows if the economy is going to get better.
We can know to be conservative or not, yes.
Is it going to be better? Is it going to be worse?
Right.
I don't know. We're going to find out. But, you know, to answer your original question of is there going to be a millage increase? Yes. I mean, again, I.
One day.
I don't think that's going to be shocking anyway. I don't think it should be shocking anyway. I think if anybody was to be shocked, they should be shocked by the fact of the last twelve years, our millage has gone up exactly one half mill net. And the only reason why it went up one mill was because we put in the MAT transit program. That's it. It's gone up, it's gone down half a mill net to operate the county over the last twelve years. That should be shocking, not the fact that it might go up at some point in the future.
Okay, all right. So, um, as we finish up here, and I mean, I know that we could go on talking here for quite a while. I mean, we've had quite a spirited conversation, I think, here today.
I think we've had wonderful conversation.
Okay, all right. My question, my question is, um, I, I know that you, what you, Toby, wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening at Park Plaza.
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely.
We forgot all about that.
We got so spirited that we, uh, forgot something I wanted to talk about. Uh, and, and this again gets back to budgeting, gets back to planning, gets back to the things that we've been doing. Uh, we have already renovated the bottom floor of the courthouse. That is done. And, and the goal, let me start with the overall goal is, the overall goal is to get to having public safety, court, law enforcement, et cetera, in the courthouse, shocking of all shocks, having court functions in the courthouse. And then in Park Plaza, the administration building to have administrative functions. And then out at the annex, the, the church on Deathfall Road, to have fire EMS emergency management and then sheriff, obviously in the sheriff's building. So to have some type of rhyme or reason to why people are in what building. So that's where we're eventually heading to. So we have already done the bottom floor of the courthouse. So now probation, uh, public defender and victim advocate are all there. So last week, my staff moved out of public, out of Park Plaza. And we are now at the corner of Edgefield, right across from kind of the diagonal corner from the sheriff's office.
Your trailer park trash, right?
No, not trailer park trash. It is no longer Park Plaza. It's Trailer Park Plaza.
Okay, okay.
That is where we are. We're in Trailer Park Plaza.
Something like Myrtle Manor?
Yeah. So, so, uh, so in there, in, in the building that I'm in is obviously my office, the county attorney, code enforcement, the treasurer's office of if people need to come pay their doc fees or, or anything pertaining to the lake, they would come there, uh, and then human resources. So people that need those services will now come to Trailer Park Plaza to have their services. And then the one directly beside us is voter registration. So if people need to, to have those services, they no longer come to Park Plaza, they will come to Trailer Park.
How long, how long is this project going to take?
Probably about a year.
A year?
Probably about a year. Uh, and, and when we're done, there's going to be a lot of great things about the building. But I'll tell you, two of the most important things is people will come, be able to come to one room and deal with the auditor, the assessor, uh, tax collection. I think it's going to drastically reduce the time people have to spend in the building, which makes it much more efficient and effective.
We're going to triage government services is what we're going to do.
And second, second thing will be, the, in the parking lot will be a drive-up, uh, window that people can have services provided and, and taxes paid for. So I think that those are great things of what's going to happen in the building. I'll tell you the more equally impressive thing is, is how we're going to pay for it. It's going to be about fifteen million dollars at the end. Ten million of that is coming from ARPA funds. Uh, five million is coming from cash savings that the county has, has done. So that's, we've already done the courthouse. We're doing Park Plaza. This fall and winter, we're going to start renovating the DSS building using a CDBG grant that we got. And then next year, our plan will be apply for another grant to renovate, to renovate the DEHAC, DES building. So in the next two to three years, we're going to have four county buildings that have been substantially renovated without having to increase millage for construction. I think that is impressive.
Now, isn't some of the funds coming from that, from the capital sales tax project?
It'll be repaid, about two and a half million of the fund balance that we're going to take out is going to be repaid when we get to that part of the capital project sales tax.
Let me, let me ask you a question about the capital sales tax project. Since so many, um, different things seem to be going ahead, such as you, y'all are, to go ahead and get your funding back on this. Um, the PALS building is another building that they're going ahead because they have the funds and then they'll be repaid back from the capital sales tax. Why, why didn't we do it as a bonded thing and then have the capital sales tax be paid back to pay back the bond?
And, and that's a decision that could have been made by, by county council. I would tell you, you don't need to bond it a capital project sales tax unless the projects are urgent. That, that would be my.
Well, I mean, everybody says because inflation's going up and that's why people are going ahead with doing these projects. So that's why I asked that question.
I don't think any of them are doing it because of inflation. We're, I can tell you, we're doing it because ARPA has a deadline. You have to have the money spent by December of twenty twenty-six. So, and we can't, we can't spend ten million of it by twenty twenty-six and then wait until the capital project sales tax coming for the other five. We, you know, we kind of got to go at one time. So we're, we're going with the ten million. Uh, as far as the city and the PALS building, they're not doing that again because of inflation. They're doing it because they have an opportunity to do it. Uh, but back to your original question of bonding.
Well, isn't that what you have to do? Don't you have to bond it and then pay it back with the capital sales tax? Isn't that a way that that can be done? It can be done, that's all.
It can be, but.
Rather than waiting for the money to come in, it can be bonded out, that's all.
In the oh eight, seven, eight, capital project sale taxes before my time.
The very first one, yep.
I believe they did bond that one. And the, the sixteen, we didn't, and the twenty-four, we didn't. Again, I think if you were doing some, you were doing one project and it was time sensitive, I would say, yes, it's probably advantageous to bond it. If you're doing multiple projects that not, not, not as time sensitive, I think the money you're going to lose through bonding, not only the interest you're going to pay, but also the fees that you pay to set up the bonding of, you know, a hundred plus million dollar operation, it's going to be extraordinary. And I, I, I would have, not advocate to do it unless, again, it was something very focused and very time sensitive.
And it was before my time, but I, I believe I would assume that, that in oh eight, because of the FERC demands on the dam issue, fuse plug issue, that that probably was the justification to bond it.
Right.
And we still haven't done it, right?
Correct. But.
I mean, I know it's not our fault. I know it's not our fault, but it still isn't done.
I think if, if you had set the, the oh seven, oh eight council down and said, look, you got seventeen years minimum before you're going to do this, they probably would have made a different decision.
Right.
But obviously we don't get to make those decisions.
Don't have that crystal ball.
Don't have that crystal ball. You know, you don't get to look and make decisions in the rearview. You know, they have what's in front of them, which was FERC saying, thou shall do this now. And this was how they decided to do it. You know, I'm not questioning. I would tell you, that's probably, I'd probably made the same recommendation, just to be honest with you, sitting in.
Well, I just, I just, it was a question because it seems like we have more projects being, going ahead and being done because they have the money and they can get paid back by it, but.
But that's not exclusive to twenty twenty-four. I know the sheriff, I'm not sheriff, uh, the solicitor in the sixteen did it. Um, the, um, genetic center did it. Trying to think who, I think maybe.
That's fine. I mean, I just, we just said, I was just curious.
Yeah, there was, there was more than two that in the twenty sixteen, they went ahead and, and did theirs. But again, what, what the county does in those scenarios and the county council have to decide if they're going to let the PALS do it. Well, now, the, yeah, is essentially, is, is we say, look, we make no certification that we're going to realize these funds. You know, you are, you are taking this risk and doing this work ahead of schedule. And if, for whatever reason, these funds are not realized, you are taking the responsibility for, for making this decision.
Sure.
So, you know, if, if the tourism bureau feels that confident that they can move forward, then that's the decision they'll have to make.
Sure. And, and, and.
But it's not an obligation of the county is my point. The county taxpayers are not on the hook if, if they make a mistake.
Correct, correct. I just meant that, 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 I just seemed that was kind of like a trend is what we were seeing. I mean, your bar, the county council is borrowing that or taking that money out of the fund balance. It'll be paid back, I think, uh, twenty twenty-eight or something like that is what they were talking about. All right. Well, I have more questions, but I suppose I should let you all off the hook today.
So you need us to come back tomorrow, is that what you're saying?
I'm not doing anything tomorrow. I, I mean, but, I mean, we could because I have a whole list of things here. Toby, what would you like to say in closing here today?
I think the county is continuing to, to move forward. You know, we talked about the capital project sales tax, the next project, the first project will be, uh, a career center at Piedmont Tech. You know, we've talked earlier about building the next spec building at the North Greenwood Industrial Park. I think the county, we've talked about the billion with a B dollar in investment that's happened over the last three years. I think the county has remained focused not only on recruiting and retaining businesses, but I would say equally important is continuing to have a, a full pipeline of people that can take those jobs. So we're remaining focused. Uh, I think we're moving in the right direction.
And you appreciated being to have this op, for us to have this opportunity to talk together today.
Let, let me answer that, Anne, always, always.
My mic could work.
Oh, come on, Toby. I mean, you know, I, I, I put this, I mean, actually Theo asked if, if y'all could come on and I thought it was a good thing. So, uh, here we are today.
Being here, we truly do. I, I honestly, I've told you before, I'd rather come on more frequently with you. But I, I want to say one thing if I can in closing, if I've got a minute. Um, that, you know, I always say that I didn't grow up in Greenwood County. I came here with no preconceived notions. I think this is a very special place. I am tremendously proud of the work that gets done by our county employees every day to accomplish all the things and many more that we hadn't had time to talk about today.
Right.
I said a few weeks ago how honored I am for my colleagues to have elected me as chairman of county council. I think our future is extremely bright. And, uh, I, you know, I hope I'm going to kick my feet up on the porch swing one day and say, boy, look what we accomplished.
Well, but there is, uh, there is, of course, uh, we always like to look at the glass as half full, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We like to look at it as half full. I know, Toby, you like to look at it as fully full, right?
I look, you know, I, I look at it however I look at it. So I, I tend to see things, you know, going well, others not so much. I let them make up their own decision. So.
Well, that's all you can do is keep plowing forward, right?
That's what we're doing.
All right. Well, thank you, Toby Chapel, county manager, and Theo Lane, uh, county council chairman. Thank you so much for coming out today. Maybe you'll want to come back, maybe you won't.
We always want to come back, Anne.
Mic's off again.
See, I told you Toby didn't want to come. All right. That's going to do it for us. Thanks so much for being here today, everybody. I'll be back in the morning and we'll, uh, chew on this and we won't have to worry about whether Toby listens because we just heard today, he never listens to my show. That's a wrap right here on WCRS. Take it away with the end of the show. Have a good night. And I'll be back in the morning right here on WCRS.